Approval of a contract with Rescuing Parts Home Care LLC to provide home health care in home respite care and shore services to eligible older adults who are homebound in Baltimore County to avoid nursing home placement. This is in addition to the thirty eight other vendors that have previously been approved. This one just was lagging behind a little bit, so it will provide one more option for our consumers to select for their home health services.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much, Ms. Rowley. Move on to page eleven, item number two, Mr. Kevin Reed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and council members. Fiscal matter two is a request to approve a contract with Bolton Partners Incorporated to provide healthcare consulting for Baltimore County employees and retiree health benefit plans. The contractor will also perform actuarial services for our other post-employment benefits or OPEB trusts that I believe you're all familiar with. If approved, the contract will commence on April first, twenty twenty-two and continue through December thirty-first of this year and will renew automatically for three additional one-year periods with the option to extend for ninety days. This contractor was selected as a cooperative procurement of an existing competitively big contract of Frederick County that was awarded in January twenty twenty based on the best value from three proposals received, and we were actually able to receive more favorable pricing through negotiations than that current contract currently exists. It may not exceed one million dollars for the entire four-year term, including renewals, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
You very much, Mr. Reed. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much. We'll move right along to item number three, page fifteen, Mr. Tom Flag.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon and good afternoon, honorable members of the council. I do have one small request. Fiscal matters three and four are very similar in nature since services, just one small minor difference between the two and with the two different consultants requesting if I could present them together in order to save time for you guys?
Absolutely.
Okay. Administration is requesting approval of two contracts to provide on-call design engineering services for floodplains and water resources located in the county. Fiscal matter three is with Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions, Inc., and that'll provide service, these services on tier-two projects which exceed a hundred thousand dollars. And fiscal matter four is with KCI Technologies, Inc., which provided on tier-one projects which are less than a hundred thousand. These contracts both will continue for three-year periods, initial terms, and will renew, offer two additional one-year options to renew. The compensation for the fiscal matter three with Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions, Inc., is not to exceed four hundred thousand over the entire five-year term, including renewals, and on fiscal matter four with KCI Technologies, Inc., not to exceed, I'm sorry, I apologize, six hundred thousand on fiscal matter three and four hundred thousand on fiscal matter four with KCI Technologies, Inc., over the entire five-year term, including renewals. These both were competitively bid, awarded to the most qualified consultant through our PSSC process held on July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and there is an MBE requirement on both of these of twenty percent. And that concludes my testimony.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, moving right along to page nineteen. Ms. Deb Shindel.
Good evening, Council Chair Jones and members of the county council. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you today. The administration would like to approve of two contracts with DND Insulation and Walter Relocation, Inc. to provide moving services for the county. Each contract is one year with four one-year renewals. The estimated compensation for both contractors is combined of four hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred ninety-six. This contract was competitively bid and awarded to the lowest of the six bids received. PM, Board of Management, uses this contract to move agencies that are relocating. In addition to that, other agencies may use it such as housing and aging as a support service in programs like the lead mitigation program. That concludes my testimony, and I apologize that you can barely hear me.
Deb, we want to thank you for your dedication and commitment. I was writing down here hot tea. Okay, good. Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you, Ms. Shindel. Take care of yourself.
Thank you.
You're too valuable to Baltimore County. We need you, so take care of yourself.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Moving on, right along to page twenty-three. Resolution thirteen dash twenty-two, Mr. Marks.
Thank you very much. This resolution is a companion to a bill we're going to be discussing in a couple of minutes that would allow for Pappas Seafood to open a food preparation and distribution center in Perry Hall at eighty-eight oh one Bel Air Road. I'm sure you're all familiar with Pappas. They've been in operation for over forty years. They have orders that top over eighty thousand a month, and we are delighted that they are interested in repurposing the old ABC rental property in Perry Hall. So like I said, this resolution is a companion to bill thirteen twenty-two that we'll be discussing later on.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Let's see.
We have a speaker, Mr. Chair.
That's exactly what I was looking for. Steve Pappas?
Actually, it's Rob Hoffman who signed up to speak on the resolution.
Okay.
Actually, he's on for fourteen.
I'm sorry, my apologies. I'm playing catch-up.
And I think Mr. Pappas will be speaking on the bill. That's to come.
Okay, Mr. Pappas.
But I don't think there are any speakers specifically on the resolution, Mr. Chairman. And I think, I think you can go on to resolution fourteen.
Okay, sounds good.
That's correct. I was getting ahead of myself. My apologies.
We'll move right along to resolution, page twenty-five, resolution fourteen dash twenty-two. Council members Quirk and myself, Councilman Quirk.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, and it's always a pleasure to join forces as we always do with issues that affect our mutual constituents as we share, obviously, a common border and many communities together. And, you know, it's definitely important that we continue the revitalization, especially the long commercial revitalization district. So I'm just happy to work with Chairman Jones, also worked with the administration, and found that the Department of Planning, the administration as well, supports this wholeheartedly, and worked with Chairman Jones and myself as well, adding additional properties to consider for the commercial revitalization district. And if anybody wants to see the, basically, the addition to the existing CRD, you can find that on, right after page twenty-five, exhibit A. And Chairman Jones, I don't know if you have anything else you want to say, but this, this makes a lot of sense, and I think it's, it's important that we continue the revitalization of this area, important area for sure.
Absolutely. I could not agree more with you, Councilman Quirk, and certainly appreciate your leadership on the issue, and, you know, it's my pleasure to, to work with you on it, and we'll get it done. Any questions or comments from the members before we call on the speaker? Okay, who's our speaker for fourteen dash twenty-two?
I believe the speaker is Rob Hoffman, Mr. Chairman, and I think Ms. Bel Castro is about to unmute him.
Thank you, members of the council. I represent Cafritz Investments. Substantial portion of the area that's being considered for this extension of the commercial revitalization district. It's about eight hundred thousand square feet of office that was built about fifty years ago. The Social Security Administration was the tenant on the property and have decided that they're not going to renew their lease. So for purposes of Cafritz Investments, this commercial revitalization district will give them an opportunity to find a viable and great reuse of this particular piece of property. Right now, we're looking at a data center, which I think would be a great use of the piece of property. On the, on the call, didn't sign up to speak, but Dave Baird is our commercial real estate broker. Conrad Cafritz is on the line, as well as Keith Miller from Cafritz Investments. And I just wanted to sign up to thank everyone on the council for their time, and if you had any questions, just to be available to answer any questions. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Thank you very much, and we will move on. You good, Councilman Quirk?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to page one. Bill ten dash twenty-two, Mr. Patoka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill ten twenty-two amends uses permitted by right in the business major zone to permit a Class A brewery in the Ruxton Riderwood Lake Falls area. It's, right now, they are permitted to brew up to no more than five hundred barrels. And I know Councilman Cat, if he, in his math class, he would say, how many kegs does five hundred barrels equal? And so the answer, Councilman Cat, is one thousand kegs and one thousand and a half kegs.
Thank you.
Sure, but we've had extensive community input on this. We've had a town hall on this, and it allows a little, a little additional capacity to brew, and it also allows the, the operators to serve food. I've got a note from one of the community leaders, Patrick McCormick, and he was unable to get on, but he wanted to say that Lake Falls Association is, is pleased to have worked with the RRLRAA, which is the Ruxton Riderwood Lake Roland Area Improvement Association, the developers, Jop Mantey and Chris Pattenot, along with Mr. Emhoff. And we've had, there's a restrictive covenant being put in place to allow this. We've had a town hall meeting. So we've, we've had extensive community input to allow this change, and it also, it's consistent with the Ruxton Riderwood Lake Roland Area Community Plan, and it is restricted to the boundaries of that area, of that community plan. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will vote me affirmative of this and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Cat?
Yes. Councilman, where in Ruxton will this brewery be located?
It's sixty, it's sixty-one hundred Falls Road near the light rail station. So if you are heading north on Falls Road and you make a right turn into Lake, the entrance to Lake Roland, and then you would make, you would cross Falls Road underneath.
Right.
Falls Road becomes an overpass, and it's located near the light rail station.
Okay. Know exactly where you're talking about. Thank you.
Sure.
Any additional questions or comments before we get to the speakers? All right, we will start off with Mr. Jeffrey Budnitz.
Just a moment, Mr. Chair, let me find Mr. Budnitz. Mr. Budnitz? Yes, we can.
I would just like to reiterate Councilman Patoka's comments. The site that this facility is being built on has been a long legacy of less than desirable industrial uses. I live about eight blocks from the site, work about two blocks from the site, and have been a volunteer at Lake Roland in between for over a decade, and I think that this redevelopment that will be allowed to occur with this geolocated legislation amendment will be a huge boon and amenity for people in the community to be able to walk up to this site and enjoy it. So I appreciate anyone supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to thank Mr. Budnitz for all that he does as a volunteer to support Lake Roland. He spends a great amount of time trying to make Lake Roland a better place to, to take your family, and works the trails quite a bit, and really is an outstanding volunteer. Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could, I just want to echo Councilman Patoka's comments. Yeah, a lot of us know Jeff Budnitz because he really is like a super citizen, super volunteer, does a lot of just incredible work for the county, all around the county, too. I mean, he really is one of our, really, our super, superstars from the citizen activists, does amazing work at Lake Roland, but he's been instrumental with a lot of stuff at Rocking Parks and other programs in the county. So that's a good one you got there, Izzy. That's, this one sounds like a, a great, you know, a great use permitted as well. Definitely, sounds like a good one.
Thank you, Councilman Quirk. I think you started the trend of making breweries fashionable again.
Chairman Jones, I couldn't hear you. If you, if you said something, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, our next speaker is Jamie Khan. Thank you.
Mr. Khan?
And Council Chair and members of the council. I'm Jamie Khan. I serve as the president of Ruxton Riderwood Lake Roland Area Improvement Association. I just want to echo the, the comments that have made, been made to this point. The prospective owners of this property approached us eighteen months ago, have been very forthcoming and very supportive of the community wants and needs, including those of the adjacent neighbors. Lake Falls Association has been incredibly engaged in this process and has provided valuable feedback to us as we've drafted restricted covenants on this project. We're excited about it. We think it's a huge enhancement to this community, and Ruxton Riderwood fully supports this effort. And we also want to thank Councilman Patoka for his support and willingness to consider this project.
Thank you, Jamie.
Fantastic. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank Jamie. I know Saturday night took a strange turn for you and for a lot of the volunteer firefighters. And so I just want to thank you for what you did on the accident on Old Court Road on Saturday night in trying to get things back into a good place for those, for the folks that were involved in, in the accident on Old Court Road.
All right. Moving right along, page two. Bill eleven dash twenty-two, Councilman Quirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill eleven dash twenty-two makes the theater use permitted in the business local zone to permit specific live music performances. Of course, this is permitted if we have an AD district under this bill, and right now the county currently has one AD district. I know others are being worked on. It's located in Catonsville, so this just is a district one, specific type of use permitted. So we think it makes a lot of sense, you know, spearheaded by Kirby Spencer, and as all of you know, Kirby's been one of the two leaders on this whole effort with AD, working together, of course, with the council and also the county executive's office, has been very, very supportive, truly helping bring this AD district forward, along with many, many organizations such as UMC as well. I know Kirby's going to be speaking in a moment. I do think there's one, one technical amendment, Mr. Secretary, but yeah, I urge your support for this. Makes a lot of sense. Think we have strong citizens supporting this as well. I'm not aware of anybody against it. And yeah, I think it's just one more way we can enhance this new AD district and hopefully attract business and the arts community and, of course, comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Quirk. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Why don't we bring on Ms., Mr. Kirby Spencer?
I think, Ms. Kirby Spencer, she's, I think, is she unmuted, Chris?
Yes, she is. I just unmuted the Spencer.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, everyone. I, I often get the mister with my first name, so.
I apologize. I heard, I heard Councilman Quirk say, said it the first time, and then I looked down and I certainly apologize.
It's, it's actually, it's been fine. It's worked well sometimes in business for me. But anyway, thank you so much, Chairman, and also to the rest of the council representatives. I appreciate your time today. Kirby Spencer, I'm from Catonsville, and I'm here supporting the bill eleven twenty-two introduced by Councilman Quirk. My years of passion from the village, for the village, has led me to help form the Baltimore County Arts Guild, as, as Tom had mentioned, which has led to creating the very first arts and entertainment district here in Baltimore County through the tremendous support of your council and, of course, Johnny O. Since this district was formed, we've been exploring ways to entice that and encourage that economic growth and tourism through the arts in Catonsville, and specifically, we are looking to encourage the formation of theaters and other venues that will support local artists and musicians. So unfortunately, as Tom has mentioned, the, the existing zoning regulation just needs to be updated, I believe, for such a, an environment as the arts and entertainment district. And then this bill, you know, would help the zoning regulations to attract more arts and entertainment, other viable retail and restaurant businesses, which also supports the artist community, which obviously is a very important thread to the thriving community anywhere. And as you know, we have our little logo, Music City, Maryland, which we proudly hail and, which started with just the outdoor season, warm weather venues. So this will be wonderful to be looking to expand the indoor year-round opportunities. And bill eleven twenty-two would support this and create that economic drive, again, increasing tourism to the district that could lead support for all of our other retail and restaurant entrepreneurs. Thank you again for supporting this update for the zoning regulations and supporting our first, my hope, of many arts and entertainment districts here in Baltimore County. Come join us in Catonsville Arts District.
Number one, thank you, Ms. Kirby. I certainly apologize, Ms. Spencer, for messing up, and Councilman Quirk, if you don't mind, I would like to join you on this bill. Okay, fantastic.
Yeah, but anybody who wants to co-sponsor, definitely, the more the merrier. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. All right, we will move on to page five. Councilman Marks, bill thirteen dash twenty-two.
Thank you very much. Just to reiterate what I said earlier, bill thirteen twenty-two amends the uses permitted by right in the BL zone to permit a food preparation facility for the preparation, cooking, storage, or distribution of food or meals in the Perry Hall Commercial Revitalization District. No one-site restaurant or carryout service can be provided. This has been a legislation that would allow for Pappas Seafood to fill an unoccupied space at eighty-eight oh one Bel Air Road. We are delighted to welcome Pappas Seafood Shipping Department.
I'm in. Yay! Not marking me absent.
Welcome, Councilwoman Bevins. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
I was saying, we are delighted to welcome Pappas Shipping, Pappas Seafood to Perry Hall. This is not going to be a restaurant, it's simply their, their shipping operation. They ship eighty thousand crab cakes a year. Oprah Winfrey has said that it is one of her favorite crab cakes, and we're very happy to have them in Perry Hall.
Councilman Marks, would you mind a friendly amendment to your bill?
What would that be?
One that would require the county council to sample these crab cakes before they distribute it throughout the country, because after all, it's a reflection of us here in Baltimore County, and I guess think it's only fair that we make sure that we have some type of quality control on the distribution of these crab cakes.
They're excellent crab cakes, and I know Councilwoman Bevins is very happy to have that restaurant in her district, right?
What are we talking about? I'm sorry.
Pappas. Pappas.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Yes.
Steve Pappas knows how to make a crab cake. As stars, she goes there when they're on special, Wednesday, eighteen ninety-nine crab cake and two sides, but you have to eat on the bar side to get that discount.
Very good.
She knows.
Not forget the crab imperial there. It's excellent. And, Mr. Secretary, I'd like to be a co-sponsor of this legislation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much, and I believe Steve Pappas is actually one of our witnesses or offering testimony.
Can you put me on that as well?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Bevins.
And I apologize again for not being able to get on in time.
Right on time, Councilwoman Bevins.
Thank you.
Maybe late, but you're right on time. Mr. Pappas?
Is Steve Pappas fine? David?
Yeah, I said, he signed up.
Thanks, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, great. Good to hear from you, Steve.
Yeah, how are you? Thank you so much for, for hearing what our issues are there on eighty-eight oh one. And I want to, I want to let Kathy know that we're probably still considering leaving that seafood company there, just without those ugly containers that are all over that corner, because we'll have that, the new warehouse where we can put our shipping equipment.
Awesome.
Pretty, pretty, pretty park-built as well.
Good. Good. Good to hear from you.
Yes, and, and as far as the crab cakes go to the council, anytime. I'll bring them over. Traveling all the time.
Taco Tuesday's not bad either.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you. I have to say, I don't think I can make that eighteen ninety-nine special anymore, but...
I, yeah, I figured.
I try my best.
Yeah, yeah. That was false advertising on my part. That was... That was pre-pandemic, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was pre, yeah, crab cake crisis, shipping crisis.
Yeah.
Everything crisis.
I bet.
But we are rebounding well, and thank you so much for hearing us out.
Good. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to our last item for today. Page three, bill twelve dash twenty-two. Myself, Councilman Marks and Councilman Patoka. This is the County Code Board of Appeals Rules and Rules of Practice and Procedures. And we do have, who's our speaker?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, this is Ostwick. Do you want me to tee it up for the speakers about what the bill is about? About what the bill is about. Anytime that the, the Baltimore County Board of Appeals seeks to amend its rules of procedure, which are set forth in the appendix to the Baltimore County Code, anytime they wish to amend those rules, it, it has to essentially go through the county council so that the council can review their recommended changes and then adopt legislation in order to codify those changes. The last time it was done was in two thousand and five. The, the changes that are proposed by the Board of Appeals at this time are relatively minor. Ms. Dopkin and Mr. Sampson and Ms. Cannington will be available to, you know, bear, share, shed some more light on that. But they're mostly to update the language, to account for the virtual hearings, the submission of evidence electronically. And again, to update the language, a lot of the language in the current rules are masculine pronoun. And so this is to make it gender neutral. And there are some other subtle changes. And again, Ms. Dopkin will be able to speak to that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from any of the members? Okay, Ms. Dopkin. Ms. Dopkin.
Ms. Dopkin. Members of the council.
Yes.
As Mr. Bostwick said, these are largely housekeeping amendments to the rules to make them more in keeping with the twenty-first century and to render them gender neutral. Much of it is in response to changes in the court system requiring electronic filings, which our rules did not here to for accommodate. And to allow for the virtual hearings, which we have all been using for the past two years. Us and the eventuality of perhaps a hybrid existence. I we also tried to clarify some language to make these more accessible and easier to comply with for community associations and individuals who wish to participate. We've gotten a few suggestions from the county attorney's office, which we're incorporating and have sent Mr. Bostwick minor amendments incorporating those suggestions or responding to them to incorporate them and clarify. But for the most part, there are no substantive changes to our prior rules. And we just want to keep pace with technology and society. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also want to thank both Mr. Bostwick, Mr. Phillips, the county attorney's office for working with us and to Mr. Sampson, who was pretty much the committee on revising these and Ms. Cannington, who we couldn't function without.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Dopkin?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I just want to take this time to thank the Board of Appeals for all of its work. I say this a lot. My father was on the Board of Appeals for about a decade. I have many memories of coming home from college and seeing him writing, writing decisions down the basement. I know you do a lot of hard work and it's often underappreciated. But I want you to know that it's valuable and I want to thank you for your service.
Well, thank you, Mr. Marks. I remember your father fondly. Both were the kindnesses and the denials he gave me. But he always did it diligently and conscientiously. And that's how we try to function as well, to do our best.
Thank you very much.
Very good. It's no question. We certainly appreciate all the hard work and dedication the Board of Appeals does and.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilwoman Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on a personal note, Deb, it's so good to hear your voice.
Thank you, Ms. Bevins.
Yeah, yeah.
To be here.
Yeah, and it's good to hear that Mr. Sampson is doing such a good job, who was my, is my appointment. So pass that on as well.
Well, I think he's on with and he's been invaluable to us. So thank you for appointing him.
Yeah, good to hear. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, with your membership on a committee or whatever to take a look at salaries. I hope that you are also considering the Board of Appeals. I don't believe they've had a salary increase in many, many years. So I'd just like you to keep that in your mind because it's a very time-consuming job. And they do such an excellent job and, and, you know, we need to make sure that we have the very best serving on the Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cat? And that, that, that program change is in the works. Good. So we'll look forward to your support.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Petoka?
Thank you. I just want to thank Ms. Dopkin for her outstanding work. She brings commitment and integrity to the job along with her colleagues and appreciate everything you've done, Ms. Dopkin. It was the easiest appointment that I had with appointing you to the, to the Board of Appeals to represent the second district. In our conversation, I knew in the first minute that you were going to be an outstanding appointment. Also want to thank.
You're welcome.
Also want to thank Ms. Cannington and also Mr. Sampson, who I think we're going to hear in just a few minutes. And I also agree with Councilman Catch that we ought to review the compensation of the Board of Appeals. The work is daunting and we want to I think it's only fair to have some, some level of compensation.
And if I may take a moment of personal privilege to say, we have seven wonderful board members. All our attorneys, all are devoted to doing a good job and are thoughtful, well-informed. It's a pleasure to serve with them. So I thank the entire council.
Thank you, Ms. Dopkin.
Any additional questions or comments? We will move right along. Thank you, Ms. Dopkin. We'll move on to Mr. Sampson.
Honorable members of the council. I'm going to say more actually thanking you than I am substantively about the bill. I certainly want to thank specifically by name Chairman Jones, Councilman Marks, Councilwoman Bevins, Councilman Petoka for your kind words about our board and, and myself in particular. Thank you, Councilwoman Bevins, for appointing me. Thank you, Board Chair Dopkin, for your kind words. And I certainly echo the, the comments about the fine work that Chair Dopkin has done in her tenure on the board. In particular, in my two years in all of her service and more recently the past year as our chair, who we unanimously nominated to continue as chair. I want to echo the comments thanking Ms. Cannington for what she does both behind the scenes and on the scene. She provides invaluable service on behalf of the board. Thank you also to Councilman Couch and Councilman Petoka for your comments in support of board salary increases. Didn't expect to hear that in this meeting and, and thank you. I don't want to belabor thi- this point or this bill any longer. You all have other pressing matters in business, so I'm just here to, to support it. I don't have any substantive comments. I think the Chair Dopkin adequately did that. And thank you, Mr. Bostwick, actually for teeing it up. You, you summarized it admirably. So unless the board has, I'm sorry, the council has any questions for me, I have nothing more to offer.
Thank you so much. We certainly appreciate your thanking us and we certainly appreciate your service to the citizens.
Thank you.
Sure. And any additional questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, we'll move right along to Ms. Cannington.
Actually, just want to echo Mr. Sampson. I was here to provide support for the bill and to answer any questions that you may have. We've been working on these for quite a while. And I appreciate everything that our board has done on these. And I appreciate all of your kind words about the board and myself and I, I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Certainly our pleasure and we look forward to taking up the issue of your salaries very soon. That's next. And sharing all the documentation that you've shared with me in terms of identifying the level of work. We know you do a lot of work. But when you actually take a look at it and have it laid out and quantified, it becomes absolutely clear that we owe you a great debt and at a bare minimum, at a bare minimum, we can increase your salary. So any additional questions or comments from the members? Absolutely. Beautiful day outside. Everybody get out, get some sunshine. And we will see you all next week. Everybody take care. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, sir.